I'll have to explain first why the meeting. When you're considering a major development or development in British Columbia, you go to Front Counter B C and make application for that project. They in turn state that have you contacted the Department of Energy and Mines? So this is a mandatory meeting that we must have. And it's not a meeting to introduce our project. It's really a meeting to get, discuss the project with the public and hear their response. So we can do a report. For example, let's say the environment. Do we need to do any work with the Ministry of Environment? What work do we need to do? Or indigenous affairs? So we're just introducing the product, project. And then there'll be a question and answer period after this, after we present this. So it's not like we're saying applying for a mine. We just need your input so we can write the documents which may determine whether the mine is going to go ahead or not. My name is Ted Nutt. Imagine we're here. This is our agenda. Starting at six thirty and then we'll, after this presentation, we'll, then the question and answers will be, and we'll, we'll record those questions and give my answers to you. So move higher. So I'm a project manager. I'm a graduate in mining engineering, particularly in geotechnical and construction. So I build mines for a living. So I've got fifty years doing this. And I'm from Nelson. I'm a local boy. And I've done numerous programs in the SoCal. I recognize some of you guys from little engineering projects, houses and septics and flooding and that part. So we've got quite a bit of experience. But most of my experience has been in other countries. So the project is to really look at an area. And it's numerous amount of areas, but an area that has the least or no environmental impact. And the best area is between Boulder Creek and Erie Creek. The spot that we're looking at is not in either watershed. So we have the two sets of mineral claims. We're eight point three kilometers from the turnoff from Passmore. About a kilometer and a half beyond the Erie Creek Bridge. We are using all existing infrastructure, so it's nothing new that we're building. The proposed operation, I put down April twenty twenty six to October fifty eight. So it's a thirty year life. And of course, with the strength on, that will most probably change that date because in, we're dealing with supervisors and department rather than the workers and department right now. So everything's slow. So it is a small quarry. It starts off at ten thousand tons a year and maxes out at twenty thousand tons a year. All of the paint, we're right here right now. All of the paint is existing mineral claims. So our, our list is right, right here that we're looking at for the, for the quarry. By the way, all that other area in there is mainly for graphite. And in more detail, you could see here, there's six claims which is this area of interest where the crushing, oh, sorry, the screening plant and quarry would be. Next.
Ted, where's the roads on this?
We're coming to that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. It's just all there. Stuck.
I've got like five of them. But I didn't want to, I didn't want to give them to anybody until they actually heard it. It's, it's to acknowledge the client. I mean, people seen it on the street, like you will circulate them after I talk to them.
Our company did not like a metal mine, a large metal mining company like that. But they specialize in industrial. So we're, we're not, we're not building any, any roads whatsoever. So we're just coming off of the Forest Service road, which we have a permit for already for use. And for about a half a kilometer onto an old clear cut. Now, this clear cut is, has been logged twice and there's no reclamation on it. So it's just, just random bush material. So the material, the organic material in the bush would be stripped off and built into, for berms, for noise. We've got some pretty good pictures of it, somewhere on here. But it won't, stuck, not stuck, but the computer's working.
Disconnect it.
Shut it all down.
But not the computer.
No, shut the projector down.
Yeah. Shut it down and turn it on, the projector?
Yeah, you can try it down again. Yeah, you could just try shut it down and start with, yeah, with all the projector maybe?
Okay. Well, maybe I'll go into the geology of the area, which you probably, people will be very interested in. It's three hundred million years old is most of this area. And that's where the graphite is. And that's the same material as the East Kootenays. So the coal seams from the East Kootenays, the same coal seams are here. And I actually have in my pocket coal from the SoCal Valley Coal Fields. So people don't realize that you actually have two coal seams here. And those coal seams are above the graphite deposit. The graphite deposit is in a more marble type of material. And what's happened is that through continental drift, this area has lifted up into a dome. And that's why when you look at the mountains here, you can see it's curved like that on this side. And it comes up over top of here and then down in all directions. So this dome part in the center is metamorphic sedimentary rock. And that's where the graphite seam is. But also underneath all of it is a huge fault and it's almost vertical. And I've got an illustration on it. Almost flat. It's a huge fault called a shear zone. So it's very thick, has a lot of water, but it also has a lot of gas, okay? So when you're at Coal Creek, in the, by the Coal Creek Bridge, you look in that canyon, you actually, it's the only place you actually see this shear zone. And there's actually gas coming off of there. And that's why in some places here, the trees are quite small because you're actually poisoned by the gas. But underneath is this big flat fault. This here is an old sedimentary deposit which has the coal seams, okay? So that's being cut off by this fault. So that's here. And a lot of you actually live on this. And this is again where the graphite and coal seams are. And over top are the hard rock. The dome is like this. So this is when you see all those rock faces. This is this over top of that dome. So this is actually a big swelling. So the idea of this, of a quarry is that because this dome was created, it broke off, these rocks have been broken off the faces. And they're very hard. So they're like diorite, granodiorite, diorite, of course, monzonite. And I have a pretty good table in here that shows how hard these rocks are. So the diorite is fifteen times stronger than concrete that you use for your foundation of a building. And what we're interested in is the granodiorite, which is a little weaker. But it's still, that when you see that rock, I've got them laid out there, which those that you can look at, is that's what we're after. Because you can never erode that stuff. It's, so the idea is to use it for flood control, for riprap. And boulders again to riprap. So that's the whole idea of the project. About seventy-eight percent of the material from the quarry would be used for flood control. And a lot of you are in trouble and don't realize it. I did a study back years ago in Crescent Valley, north of there. And it's where to put your house in relationship to the flooding of, of the SoCal River. And we found out that when you have a house, it's supposed to be good for a hundred years. But at Crescent Valley, the rate of flooding is a hundred and twenty-five years. So you can build a house, but it is not going to last a hundred and twenty-five years. And we did that study of the movement of the river. But in some places along here, particular one guy I thought might be here tonight, it's, it's actually eroding, every ten years, it's eroding one meter. So by using the riprap, which is that side, the flatter rocks against there, and I have sections and all that, you stop it. Then, then where you get into the curve of the river, then you put the large boulders down over top of the riprap. And that totally stops the erosion. So that's the main purpose. The second one is the sand from there is, something here? The sand is, looks like this. So it's not like a gem, this is a gem. But the sand, if you look through a microscope, it's raw. You will see it's irregular. So it will bond together and give a lot of strength. And that sand here is capable of a hundred and twenty M P A. So that's, the concrete here is twenty-five M P A. So it can be made for high strength concrete, which is rare. And it's only because it's unique geology. So when we come to, to this idea, we're looking at a small mine to mine this stuff. And the reformation, it will be the organic material that this noise burned. Although we anticipate very little noise because there's, the closest house to us anyways is the organic mechanic, one kilometer away. So we're not in like in the neighborhood. Anybody that wants a tour of the location, welcome to that. Any luck, girls?
We're still trying, sorry.
Yeah. So economically, because it's a mining industry, I have a table in there that shows all the different types of jobs and the impact on the economy. So in the mining industry, for each employer, each employee, it creates five jobs. Petroleum industry is like six jobs. Forestry, five, four jobs. But it, it does create other work. It's not a big mine, we're looking at three people. So the economics is probably more about the how of weather. Now, you know, a rainy season, the rate of erosion will determine it. So it's not just for the SoCal Valley. This will be used elsewhere. It's far, and we're looking at probably the biggest market is that, the Columbia River near Trail. But it's such, it's such a small input on, on the area. Still nothing?
Forget that, I think.
Yeah?
I think.
Okay. All those hours preparing this. There you go.
I think that's off the internet, I don't know why. But enjoy the coffee and the treats. It's Tracy, we're talking.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thanks, Tracy.
It really doesn't seem like it is a small impact on the area. It's that you keep mentioning that. But you know, maybe as mine goes and scales of mines internationally, it is a small mine. I didn't understand that. But it seems like it's thirty years at twenty tons a year, or sorry, twenty thousand tons a year. Is that the, is that the number?
The area is not, it's almost flat, okay? So it's just, it's like the size of a small clear cut.
Can you scroll back a quick key?
Where would you like to go to?
Oh, there you go. Keep going. Let's hope we don't stall in the same place.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, no, no.
Okay, no, the other, okay, just keep going back. Go up. Just go down, going to the future.
Going to the future.
Okay, next. Next.
It just doesn't want to go off that ear, it gets stuck. Let me try it here.
But you, but you can see.
Does anybody else have a computer?
What did you want, which one did you want to talk about? Indigenous people?
Yeah, for the indigenous side of it, we've had our, our meeting with them.
Which, which one?
It's Snaiks. And also there's a book out. Have you seen that, written a book? And in that book, I use that for reference. But during the meeting, it just so happened that I actually worked with the guys at that meeting many years ago. And their point is that the Snaiks were fishermen and berry pickers. So they said there's no way they would go and kill a bear and drag it out in the winter. And that they, they were camped out around Lemon Creek. And they have thirty-five archaeological sites in Lemon Creek. And they purposely created forest fires in those days so that they could grow, they could get huckleberries, large amount of huckleberries for the vitamin C. They said they, they had, they didn't do anything in the interior. So when I was getting the graphite mine, mine going, we had, we invited six different tribes from Okanagan right to Tenahaw out of Cranbrook. They too said there's no way that we would ever live in an area like that. We'd live along the Columbia River. But that was all destroyed to the sedans.
So Ted, like, there's, there is no way, the whole, the whole SoCal Valley is not archaeological, allowing to it. There's, there's probably no doubt that the Snaiks people would have been moving up and down through the Little SoCal.
Yeah, there's no doubt about it.
Yeah, so I mean, I mean.
Oh, the Little SoCal, even provincially, on the government records, it states that it was the SoCal River. And even the natives said that they didn't bought there.
There's a lot of hidden data that's in, in Rad. Like, I think, just to be honest with you, like, I've been, I've seen thirty, about thirty of these quarry permits in the last little while, they're going to ask you to do an archaeological impact assessment.
That's what I want to hear. You know, this is the idea of the meeting.
Yeah.
What you just said, okay? So, and what, what you just said too, the point about the size. We want to hear that.
Okay.
That, that's what the mandatory meeting is all about. We want to get those comments.
Passmore and Ballackin is known as a winter camp. And there was over ten thousand people living in that area. The potholes up in, on the Little SoCal River were used for, by them often. There's lots of stories of them digging the potholes. When they do have hump in, they would make fires, take rocks, put them in the potholes, make a hot bath.
But we, we're dealing with them. You know, we've already met with them. And it's that part that we, you know, we will need to do a study on that.
So who have you met that, like, I worked.
At the Nelson office.
Well, I haven't, I haven't seen you. And I'm pretty sure that the discussion would have happened, like, who did you talk to there?
Baxter?
Oh, you're, I didn't.
Yeah, and another guy from the state.
I'm Baxter.
Oh, yes, the name.
The only time you were in the office, getting to talk about the project. So.
No, yeah, well, that was about, yeah, we were talking to two projects.
No, there was one project that was discussed there, like.
The other one's a graphite.
I guess what I'm saying right now, like, I don't know who you talked to there. I mean, my coworkers haven't filled in on that. So it's, I don't think it's fair to be saying in that document that I quickly saw there that you, you know, you've contacted us and have our approval.
Well, I, I know that, and you know, we know that we have to go to that stage. And what you just said confirms that. Because I just, well, we're just doing what we're told to present that. And that's one thing we have to do.
One of the documents said you met with the people in Nelson and there's approval, right?
I didn't say approval.
Well, I can't, I saw something quickly go there by, by there, like.
No, I just said that we had, that we had submitted a document, a letter, to say that we had met for the.
Who have you submitted that document to?
Well, the other guy at the meeting. We actually delivered.
Oh, don't, look at the document later, but.
Yeah. And we delivered it on the door the other day too.
Well, no, I've gone that, that's not, that's not telling me what's going on and getting approval.
No, no, but we, which what you just say means that we got to go through the process to get approval. And what you say goes on record, yes, we have to do it. And that's what I want to find out. Yeah. So that you, you had said that. The same thing goes for anything to do with archaeological. Because indigenous part and archaeological part are separate.
Why don't you finish your presentation and then we can.
Yeah, that's all part of it.
Ted, if you can, if you can hear it if you want, I can't, it's stuck.
Make it bigger for him to see.
Okay, the next is the transportation. All the roads exist and we already have our access permit.
Access permit? What roads are these you're talking about?
Well, that's just the Little SoCal. You know how that works? On the public road, the taxpayer pays for that. The Forest Service roads, the companies pay for that.
What about the public roads here? How are they going to get this stuff out of the valley there?
By just through a screening plant and then trucking it to.
I've worked for the highways for over thirty years and I pretty well know the roads around here. Passmore and Ballackin can't have heavy traffic.
No, but we've got a permit. They gave us a permit.
Permit is a permit, but the truth of the matter is I know where this.
Well, it is, you know, there's, what is it, every ten minutes there's a logging truck?
Yeah.
In our case, our case is about every forty minutes.
Yeah.
That's our, the forty minutes.
Let's not, the, let's not exaggerate on the logging trucks. Let's not exaggerate about anything, okay?
No, no, that's what we do.
I'm one of the longest living residents in Upper Passmore. Been there all my life, on the last ones, originals. The trucks right now, there's six trucks hauling, they're about an hour and a half apart. So let's get off this bullshit of every ten minutes is a logging truck.
Well, we, we.
Let's tell the truth.
We, we, we're not doing it now.
Here's the truth. Berry Creek is one of the oldest domestic community watersheds in the SoCal Valley. My dad put this system in in nineteen sixty-eight. It serves thirteen families. Without it, none of us would have water. Our water comes from Berry Creek. Downstream of us is another eight licenses. So altogether, you've got twenty acreages, livestock and people that get their water directly out of Erie Creek.
But we're not, we're not in the Erie Creek watershed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to continue a bit. That's been my backyard since I was a little kid. This old cup lot that you say is nothing but bush, it's a regenerating stand of timber that was logged in nineteen seventy-eight. And it's doing quite well. The fir trees in there are forty feet high and ten inches round. So it's not just bush, I'm very familiar with the land.
We've got lots of pictures.
We've got a lot of pictures and it's all, it's all bush.
The lot, the forestry is not interested in the.
I don't care what forestry says. I know what I know. I was a forestry tech and a wildlife and habitat technician. So I know what I'm talking about, if you would let me continue.
Well, all I've got to say is we got your point. It's that we'll need to study that.
Have you?
No, we're not, this is.
Have you been advised that this is the domestic watershed?
Well, this is, this is what we, you're asking the question. We're going to be giving the, that's the idea, that we answer that question. We're not, this is not the purpose of this meeting. The purpose is that you have a question and we have to investigate that.
Part of your process is to make sure everybody's involved and could be affected, am I not correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm advising you that that is a huge domestic watershed.
So, so we will, that means that we have to do, based on that environmental study on that because you've asked that question and that's, that's what we're looking for.
And that would include in your project, what mitigation plan you would have in the, in the occurrence that it would affect people's water?
Exactly.
What would you do? What could you do?
That's, that's all part of it.
If I could speak, there is a, there has been a collection of, see if you think I'm talking different. There, there has been a collection of affected community that have kind of rallied and put together a very comprehensive list of questions and concerns. The intent of, or our intent was to allow Ted to do his presentation and then read out this written submission. And the written submission is very comprehensive. It includes concerns like you have, like we all have, because we all live in the valley. We all live and we're going to be affected by this mine, one way or the other. It's going to happen. So my suggestion, just in the interest of time, is that Ted moves forward, finishes his, and then I will read this document.
The reason I brought it up is because he's struggling to keep everybody's attention. Because this obviously isn't working.
Right. I don't need that. I will, I will be doing it off of the old pen and paper. So, but I think it's important that we allow them to finish, Ted, finish his presentation so that we have armed with us what information he has to dispense. what information he has to dispense. I agree. We have a lot of information, a lot of questions, and there's been a lot of, uh, very talented people put their heads together already on this to, to kind of scramble to, to get these questions. We wanted to get a written submission because it goes into the public record. And as Ted mentioned, he's taking these, uh, questions into the public record right now. This formalizes that process. And that's a, that's a really good thing for the community. If, if that's all right, I, I would suggest that we just wait, uh, to ask any more questions until Ted is finished. And I read out this thing, and then let's open it wide up, if that's okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And I, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to step on you.
And who are you?
I'm Larry.
From where?
Down, on the end of Passmore, uh, lower, or upper Passmore Road, at the turnaround. I'd like to just.
Oh, okay. Lower Berry Creek.
Lower Berry Creek, yeah. One point three kilometers away from the mine.
That's where you're from.
Yeah. And, and I wanna apologize too, it's not Ted or Tracy's fault. I'm Lorraine, I'm at the Spokane Park Hall. We did, we did troubleshoot this before, and it ran well, and for whatever reason, um, it's not right now, so.
It's next time.
It's, yes, it's next time. So be, so be patient with us, and maybe Ted hopes can carry on with his long presentation.
Sure, that's not your fault, Lorraine, that's.
Well, no, it is, it is.
Technology, it is, but it is.
It's a lot of technology, but, yeah, yeah, so, yeah. Anyway, we're gonna keep trying, Ted, we're gonna keep trying.
Okay, but we gotta remember, the whole idea of this project is, is for, to prevent erosion. So I had a project on here from, uh, New Zealand, where we went through, uh, uh, tremendous problems and solved them by doing the riprap and the boulders. Uh, I've worked on projects around here, and I see the Spokane River, uh, and the little Spokane River being a major, major problem. And some of you people are in big trouble coming at you. Where are you going to get this stuff?
I could sell them off of this thing.
Hmm, yeah, well, we have to, I've got the different rocks there, and we, uh, um, the pits, the, the material we have has to be, and this is set up by the V C government. It's gotta be, uh, diorite or granodiorite, it's gotta be something that doesn't break down, and you've got it here. And, and not, and, uh, I've, I've done six of these projects over at Princeton. And they had to haul, the trucks, trucks were hauling it, two-hour distances, so four-hour truck to bring the proper material in. This is set by legislation. So if, 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 um, you have a flood problem, which a lot of you are working into, uh, where are you gonna get the material? And the, and this is the local material that's easy, easy the best there is. And the sand part is, um, uh, is, can make high, if you make high, high strength concrete, hundred, hundred and twenty, uh, megapascals, that's, that's, uh, unbelievable. Because there was only one place in Canada that has better sand than here, and that's Seashell. And they sell it by barges down to California. So you've got the mountain material here. If you, if you wanna go ahead and let, let things erode, you're not gonna get the material.
What's the market that you're considering?
Uh, flood control, erosion control.
But I mean, like, how large of a geographical market are you considering, are you considering selling to?
One and a half hectares.
Now, how far are you planning on possibly transporting all of the materials?
How far, well, it depends where the erosion is.
I'm just trying to get a sense of, like, how big of a market are you actually looking for? Because we know that applications can change over time, so, you know.
Well, on, on the news, you probably see the provincial government is, you've got a program right now of stockpiling this. Right where I live at Nine Mile, there's a, a project undergoing there. And, uh, four of these stockpiles are for flood control. The old pit at Belfer, next to the recycle there, uh, they're dumping there just for, uh, based on flood control. Uh, it's, it's a provincial thing, there's various grants that available for it. But, um, the, the, I can see the market going all, there, there is none, he, in this part of the province, there is nothing. And like, Brian's talking about his stuff, but Brian's in that, uh, he's not in the same deposit as we're talking about. Because this is hard and it meets, uh, international specifications.
So does that mean you'd sell it internationally?
Uh, Big Boulder would be hard to sell.
Ted, are you just above done your presentation?
Yeah, I just, well, because on here I have, there's many photographs of that.
Do you want, maybe it's a good opportunity while they sort it out, I can speak to the landlord and concerns.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, if.
And, and then at the end, then if people wanna see the different rocks and what, what we're after, or get a good feeling for the project.
Sure, and that'll give people an opportunity to think about this as well.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a question? So Ted, who owns this mine? Please behind it, I mean, we own you, but who owns it?
Uh, it's, um, a company out of Vancouver. It's a family company, and, uh, they're international, they're named in Africa. They've, uh, they've done a very large project in Africa. Um, they've done, uh, a lot of it is preparing a large, like, uh, area for apartment developments of that. What, the land, you know, just bringing in the gravel.
And is this material they need for their other project?
Uh, no. This is, this is a West Cooten project. And, and there's nothing like this in Northern Washington either, so.
So, I'm just trying to find out if the material is going to leave the West Cooten.
Probably not.
Because, why wouldn't it?
Oh, maybe to East Cooten, there's a chance of it, East Cooten is Southern Alberta. But the main part is that the flooding here is, is, uh, is bad.
Yeah. But that wasn't a question. We're not asking about our flooding, we're asking about where you're taking.
Well, where, wherever there's a meandering river or stream. And we have some photographs of already done on the North Shore.
I think Ted's concern is how big this market could be, and how big the demand could be, and how this application could change over time. Because if there was a bigger market demand, then all of a sudden, are you wanting to haul twice, four times the capacity out of it?
It's a good question, because, uh, our application, there's two, two, two applications. There's one for ten thousand tons a year, and another for twenty thousand tons, and more, in, in groups of ten thousand. So we maxed out at twenty thousand tons a year.
Okay, I thought the website said forty thousand.
It is, the, the, the application that is exposed to the public says forty thousand tons per year.
Right.
There's nothing on there that says ten or twenty, it's, that's not, that's news to us, as a community.
Okay.
Okay, so, thanks Ted, um, and I hope your technology gets resumed. Um, there has been, uh, since the signs were posted, uh, a number of folks, particularly down in the lower parts of the Upper Passmore Road, um, got together because we obviously are concerned when there's any sort of major development. We call it a major development, um, because as you find out, any development of a, of a mine, open pit mine, is, is a major development in our community. And it's not about, um, it, 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 it's not about preventing erosion. We're not here because we don't support the prevention of erosion. We're here because there's a mine that's being considered, that the product could be used to prevent eroding. But that's not why we're here. We're not here as a community to learn about the geology. Thanks Ted, I realize that there's a lot of information there. But we're not here about that, we're here about how does this impact us as a community?
Right.
So we have prepared, as, as was instructed to us, um, a written submission that we will leave with the, uh, the proponent, Ted. And that will be entered into the public record. We do have circulation pages that, that are signature pages that we can circulate, so that people can put their names and contact information there. If you agree with what I'm going to read you, please sign that document. And, uh, we will then add your signature to the list on this written submission. So the purpose of our submission, and bear with me as I read this, the lighting poor here. Do we have a better light up here?
Yes, we do, we just have it down. It's where that gentleman is standing, you're right by the light, just, uh, the middle light, you can just.
Oh, there.
There you go.
Okay.
Either that, or I was gonna have to increase my glasses. So as residents affected by the proposed Passmore Open Pick Aggregate Mine, we are attending this public hearing to engage directly with the project proponent and gain a clearer understanding of the development plan. Our objective is to begin evaluating potential impacts on our community and to better understand the process for mine approval. This knowledge will help us organize a committee that can work collaboratively with the other stakeholders and First Nations to ensure all of our local concerns are identified, represented, and addressed in a coordinated manner. We expect that as the process advances and more data becomes available, there will be sufficient opportunity for additional community input for raising, uh, concerns that may crop up. So we have multiple questions we've identified, and hopefully these capture what are in your, in your minds at the moment. One is, what about the mine approval process in itself? We don't know. Our community is ignorant as far as mine application process goes. At least I am, and I don't wanna speak for the rest of you, but I am ignorant. So we want to understand what is our, as community stakeholders, what's our interaction with that process? Is this the only opportunity, this hearing? Is this the only opportunity we have to make our voices heard of our concerns? Maybe it is, I don't know. We want to know that. We ask for, uh, we, we are looking for, when the time comes, access to the comprehensive mine development plan, including all the relevant technical information that's available, and understanding who the owners are. We are building a trust, that's the attempt here. The proponents want to build our trust to believe that they've got our best interests, you know, at heart. Do they? Let's, let's, let's hear more from them, let's understand their background, and then we can, we can weigh that when it comes time to making our decisions whether we support or not. It's not a given that we support the project, but it's not a given that we, that we're not gonna support it either. At least not at this time. The ministries involved on this are going to be the following, Ministry of Environment and Parks. Silicate dust is a big issue. Anyone who works in, in concrete business or open pit mining, or any, any business that exposes their workers to silica dust know that it is a major, major issue. So it, twenty years ago, you could open up a silica dust mine somewhere and not have to worry about it, not today. W C B are on the warpath to make sure all corporations deal with silica dust remediation, or mitigation. It's been class, silica dust has been classified by the International Agency for Research on Cancer as a Group One carcinogen. Namely, that is carcinogenic to humans, causes cancer. So what we wanna know, as members of the valley that happens to be in a trough downwind from the site, what mitigation processes are gonna be in place to stop dust from wafting down the valley, settling in on our trees, we breathe it in, et cetera. So we wanna know that the road, that the road use, traveling that stretch of the Forest Service road between the pavement and the mine, it creates a tremendous amount of dust in the summer. Anybody who's driven that knows that. That's silica dust, and you watch it, it just fades off into the valley, right? It doesn't just disappear. So that's a concern, it's not something that can't be mitigated, but it is a concern. Uh, species at risk, we know that, that the, uh, little Spokane corridor is a very important species at risk. And there's lots of studies out there. The scientists have put a lot of brain power together to pull this information together. Those are the kind of things that we expect the proponent of this to consult and mitigate any risk that there might be displacing a species at risk. And habitat protection, yeah, of course, we wanna preserve our, our backyard. Ministry of Transportation is another ministry that's very important. Because they are responsible for maintaining a safe and reliable transportation system. Comments earlier about the road and its sustainability, given, given what could be in the summertime, you know, between ten and thirty heavy, additional heavy trucks going through there per day. Now, maybe, maybe it's not that much. Maybe the mine isn't at that economic and they don't sell a lot. But the point is, to the submission that we have in our, in our hands, forty thousand tons per year is what, is what we're told, is the cap. Now, maybe it's ten this year, twenty next year, and it builds as the market enhances. But they're gonna have to mitigate the dust on the road, and they're gonna have to mitigate the, the ability of that paved section between the pavement start and the bridge, to make sure that doesn't deteriorate. The, uh, Mining and Critical Min, Critical Minerals Ministry, of course, they're the ones responsible for this application. If it were just up to them, the Ministry of Mining and Critical Minerals would love to have another mine. Because that's what they do, that's their job. Now, it's up to us, as, as, as people who have a vested interest, to make sure that that process is adhered to and that the application is correct and thorough. The mining approval process again is, uh, super important to us, to understand. What are our points of interaction with the process? Ministry of Water, Land, and Resource Stewardship. I didn't even know this ministry existed until a couple days ago when I Googled it. But they are responsible for integrated land and resource management, including objective setting for land and marine environments, effectively managing cumulative effects, and advancing reconciliation with indigenous peoples, environmental sustainability, economic growth. Obviously, this, this mine is, is going to be in their jurisdiction as well, they're gonna have input. What consultation have you had with that department? Probably not at this point, I, I understand this is preliminary. And then, of course, First Nations and, and the other stakeholders. Uh, First Nations is obviously a very, very significant stakeholder in here. And there's been already some commentary around that, and that has to be flanged up. Stakeholder environment, and, and what, other than this meeting, what, what other stakeholder interaction hasn't been? Has there been any? I suspect not, this is, as Ted said, the first of hopefully many, but this is the first, as he pointed out, mandatory hearing. And the R D C K, what involvement do they have? Well, technically, the R D C K is only involved in private lands. So every one of you who own land ultimately is affected by the R D C K. However, there is, the land that, that is proposed for the mine is adjacent to private land. So it will have an effect on private land, it'll have an effect on potential land value. The road, if you can imagine, twenty trucks a day, that'll impact property values along the highway, along the road. So yes, the R D C K should become involved, because they are responsible for the private road, private land, sorry. And we need to understand, as landowners, you know, the R D C K, we need, we need them pulling for us to, to gather more information.
So, excuse me.
Yes.
I'm Walter Plappoff.
Hey, Walter.
Hi.
Can you, Walter, I'm sorry, can you give me just one, one more minute?
I'm just gonna speak about the R D C K since you touched on it.
Oh, okay, perfect, Walter, thank you for.
Okay, well, thanks for touching on the R D C K. Normally, we get a notice of works application from the Ministry of Mines. I have looked at it, I have called Lloyd Belt in Cranbrook, have not had an answer from him. I've had our staff look into, uh, the notice of works application, we haven't received one yet. Normally, the notice of works application comes to us, and we, as a regional district, and as director for the area, make our comments. And that's one of the reasons I'm here.
Perfect.
Is to listen to the community. Is to listen to the community comments. And hopefully, this is being recorded, that I can get a copy of it.
It is.
So when we do receive that application, I will be able to make comments and invite the board to participate. So, and I don't know if the strike has any impact on that. Maybe the people that send the application to the regional district are on strike. I don't know. But I'm making every effort possible to get the application. And, you know, I'd like to ask, after you're finished, Ted, is what stage are you at on the application? I mean, there's an application flow chart. And you don't have to answer me now. We'll let Larry finish.
Yeah, thank you. And welcome. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. So I just have one closing statement, and then I'd like to open it up to the floor. And maybe Ted's commentary as well. But my closing statement is, we, the residents of the Little Slocan Valley, will be directly impacted by the proposed open pit mine. We stand united in holding the proponent, the governing bodies, and relevant ministries accountable for transparency and diligence in addressing our concerns. Our priorities are the safety of our community, the protection of our environment, and the preservation of our chosen way of life. Thank you. That's it. Thank you all. If you are in agreement with what I just said, I'd like you to sign the signature page that we're gonna send around on a clipboard. That will form part of the submission that goes to Ted, that he's gonna carry and enter into the minutes for the public record. Thank you so much for that.
So I have seen a lot of what they call gory permits. And what I suggested you about public involvement, like Ted's checking box in his step, right? And maybe there'll be other meetings. I would suggest that you contact whoever's out on that permit. And you'll put that up, and there should be somebody at the bottom that's a contact.
And with the mines?
With the mines.
Okay, yeah.
And submit those comments that you have about, and questions.
Okay.
And the way the other ministries get involved, basically, is Ted's permit will go to MCN. And then, the MCN permitting officer will basically just send it out to the various ministries. And then there's something, for a lot of these projects, it's not just mining, perhaps the forestry, there's something called an issue tracker.
Okay.
And the issue tracker will have, you know, a tab that says Ministry of Transportation, and all the different ministries. And I've never seen a public tab in them, but I have. I do know that public comments do get listened to, and maybe the permitting officer would come over and have a meeting with you guys directly.
Sweet.
Yeah.
Okay. Just to let everybody know, it's our intent to organize after this meeting. Once we wanted to see what kind of response we were getting, and this is tremendous response. Clearly, there's a high level of interest. We also wanted to scramble to get this written submission in, in time for the public record, in case this was the only hearing that the public was allowed to respond to. I hope that's not the case, but in case it is, we're gonna have something with all of our concerns on it.
Just actually, actually, give kudos actually to Ted here, because this is the very first public meeting I've ever been to for any mining permit, like a gory permit or anything like that. So, I didn't even know if it was mandatory to do.
Well, the big thing is, this is, you are the owners of the land. You're the public, because it's crown land.
Yeah.
The other ones usually own their own land.
No, I've been involved with Crown after, like, I have never been to a public meeting where it's gory, not ever.
That's interesting, because it is required on the, when you delve into it, far enough, it's a requirement.
Well, we met with Fratelli B.C., this is the person who said, we have to have this meeting.
Ted, since you have not been able to display this PowerPoint today, can you make that publicly available on the website?
We have this whole display as a hard copy that we can give to you.
Yeah, do you not have it digitally?
Make it available, though, so it's accessible for everyone else outside.
You can make it.
Absolutely.
Anybody that wants, just give Tracy a name.
We will.
If you sign the book with your email address, we can forward it.
That's perfect, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for me specifically? If not, I'll sit down and let everybody else.
I hear you say you were gonna show us that on your site.
Yes. For those interested, we do have a public-facing information site that if you want, you've signed this document, we will actually add your email to an email list, and if you're interested, we can provide you access to all the information that we have gathered. And that will arm you with all of the, way more information than you'd ever thought you'd ever want. Any more questions for me specifically?
Did you mention anything about noise? The other gravel pit is quite loud.
Yes, that's a good point. You know what? You know what? That's a really good point. It wasn't through an oversight of mine. I don't remember putting it in here, but that's a really good point. We'll make a note of that and add it to the list.
It's in the document you're gonna get.
I know, but it's not in my document.
Okay.
Well, Eric, can you speak to that with the noise bylaws as far as crushing rock and disturbing materials and earth?
I didn't understand you. What do you want me to speak to?
As far as quarry type activities, what is there in the noise bylaws that would be relevant?
The noise bylaw does not really affect industrial operations. They're allowed to operate from seven o'clock in the morning till a certain time in the evening during the week. So, you know, this operation probably, the noise will not impact, unless they're operating outside the hour that they're allowed to operate. I don't have the bylaw in front of me, but they are allowed to operate. While I've got the floor, Larry, I've got a card for you, my card, and I've got a contact with Floyd Bell, who's with the Ministry of Mines. He's the permitting officer and inspector of mines.
Perfect, thank you. I'll meet up with you afterward.
I'll point out that Lloyd Bell is a pretty good guy. He's very friendly, and we've got a lot of respect for him.
Yes, and I can vouch for that. I've dealt with Lloyd Bell. This is not the first gravel pit that has happened in Slocan Valley.
No.
There's eight gravel pits in here, and I've got a comment letter, I just want to hear the gravel pit that's been there.
Yeah.
But I'm, actually, the reason I'm here is to listen to public comments. Those comments that I have are generally mine or one or two people. We've got very good representation of the public here, and I'm here to listen. And Larry, I thank you for what you've done.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Question for Ted. So there's eight other gravel mines around here. How is this one, why do they need mine?
Well, if I show you the rocks in the, they're not mining the same rock.
Oh, okay.
And that rock is not approved for use.
So the mine across the river, not the same kind of sand?
No, it's too bad that we have that, because...
You know why? There's a bunch of people recording that, and so we have no bars here at all anymore. That's why.
So, the rock type is very different.
Than the one across?
Yeah, what we use is nice for finding gems and graphite, but it actually is totally different. It's not strong enough. And I have it in the back.
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have.
Any other questions for me specifically? And if not, I will sit.
I've just got something to do with the reason.
Okay. My name's Larry. Yeah, so, we being the, this ad hoc committee of local landowners. Me, I'm Steve Fisher, who else is on the?
Victor.
Yeah, Victor Dirksen, there we go.
Jennifer.
Jennifer.
Me.
And Marie. Per, A G R D.
Oh, great.
You got it.
And what's the, is there a name for this ad hoc committee?
No, it's just the ad hoc committee. We're not...
I just don't know, because if I start getting emails, I wanna, you know.
Okay, and I appreciate that. What we will do, as I say, we will organize something a little more strategic, I'd say, at this point. Right now, the urgency was to get a written submission in and gather enough information to make it work well. We've done that. After tonight, we'll have an ability to organize and invite others to join us and assign tasks and do what a normal committee does. Right now, we're just, I'm really the point of the spear, that's it.
Thank you, Derek.
Okay, anybody else? Questions? Perfect.
Well, I just suggest that you pick a few members, and we actually have a field trip as part of this. And especially for the regional district. We went to the regional district to try to get a response. I sent you a letter because I needed to see here.
Sure.
But the other people were not interested whatsoever. They say, oh, that's not our area. And I said, well, this is public land. It's not private. And they said, yeah, private land we're interested, not interested in public land.
So, if I can answer your question, Ted, is, when I first seen the ad, it was advertised for a South Slocan community hall. There is no such hall.
Yeah, that was my mistake.
So I actually did respond to you. I sent you an email and called you to let you know
Yes.
To hold the meeting closer to where the mine's gonna be in Passmore Hall, it'll be the one. But unfortunately, I did not get a response from you. I didn't get an email from you, giving me very brief outline. So what I'm looking for is, when we get the notice of works application, it's got all your plans, it's got everything there, then we can take a look at it. And, you know, I'm not a mines expert, far from it. But I've dealt with many gravel pit applications in the area. And I have a standard comment that I made. And I'm here to listen to what the comments are from the public here. And I'll be, my contact with the ad hoc committee has been Steve Fisher. And unfortunately, he's not here, and he is going to somewhere else or whatever. And I'll keep in contact with Larry and hopefully get all the information that we have. And then I will compile a comment from the regional district, which normally probably might have to be approved by the board.
I would appreciate that, because we went in there and said, what's our step? It was the regional district. And we were, well, Tracy was, was me, we got very poor response. You know, I would have said, well, we'd like to represent it. But they said, no, we're not involved.
And one of the reasons you're not, there is a process. And there in 2024, actually, I'll go back all the way to 2014, when there was a committee established of the province, whatever, the comeback about, you know, gravel pits specifically. And this all started in the Fraser Valley. It was affecting a lot, but it was not only myself as the director, rural director involved, there was other directors involved in. And then they established a committee here that was supposed to provide guidance. And it has changed year over year. And I've got a copy of the 2024 guidelines that you follow. This is why I asked, what step are you on those guidelines?
You've got to remember that it's not a sand and gravel, because under the government, aggregate separate sand and gravel.
This covers mines and gravel.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just want it to be flagged as a potential issue, like, you live at the bottom of the Passmore Hill. Like, you know, the steep shot before you go up. Not here to, for a service.
The first bench.
The first steep hill, and that road is so narrow. And we have kids that are going in between each other's houses, and, you know, logging truck drivers have been pretty respectful, but I really don't think we need to see more industrial traffic going down that road. Just for like...
The road is not wide enough.
It's not wide enough when you're going up and a big truck's coming down. It's pretty scary.
It would need to be rebuilt for that.
Yeah, so just, as a note, like, I don't know how we're gonna fit another industry on that road.
That's where you're concerned, which we now know. Although we have a permit for that, we'll go to Ministry of Transportation.
Yeah, I reckon that you have a permit. I'm just saying, logistically, I would hate to see it.
But that's what we want to hear, comments.
And wildlife, families of deer, families of wild turkeys that are crossing the mountain.
So, I'm, you have a permit for the FSR, or do you have a permit for general transportation? So the permit FSR has nothing to do with the road we just talked about?
Yeah.
Does that include the other access through Slocan? Using the, using the road in that direction?
Well, the public road.
I know, but I'm just saying, is the permit, like, is your permit? Okay. It's just from the sound.
Oh, well, there's an end up way.
I'll let this gentleman go first, because I got a number.
Ted, I've just got a quick question. Walter asked, what step are you at in that 2024 guideline process? And he was never answering. It's been asked twice now. What stage are you at in that process?
Very beginning. We made application through, from town to B.C. And this is the first thing they said. He had to have this meeting.
So is that part of that guideline you're talking about, Walter?
Yeah, so I'm not too sure where you are at. When I'm looking at this guideline, you know, item number seven is conduct further engagement with indigenous nations nearby, and nearby residents, and other possible stakeholders. And I presume this is what you're doing today.
Yes, but what complicated this whole process is the strike.
Which strike are we talking about?
D C T U, Government Strike.
Yeah. All that's left are the two and five.
And so, just to respond to that lady about the road, this was brought up many years ago when Interfort applied for a permit to do logging in that area. And as we all know, the residents that live in Passmore, from the top of Passmore Hill down to the bottom of Passmore Hill is a very narrow road, curvy road. And when you're meeting up with a logging truck, one of you is gonna have to pass to move. Now, the extra traffic on there with the trucks that are coming from the mine or whatever, that's gonna create a problem. So I'm kinda looking, I looked into it, I had a meeting with YRB. And they have an annual meeting every year about the winter roads. And I brought it up to their attention. That road is very dangerous. Not only with the additional traffic that's being proposed by the mine, but existing traffic that's paired with the logging trucks. And I've met with the Minister of Highways, Claude Stone, many years ago. Brought that to him. And the response was, when we have extra funds, we will go out there to buy our properties. We might have to do some easements on property or acquisition of private property depending on the residents. So they are looking at it. And the idea is, if there's gonna be additional traffic, if the mines get approved and it moves forward, there will be additional traffic. And hopefully, the safety of the residents and the road should be improved.
I also would like to state, it's our only exit. For that community, we have one exit point, and it's that road.
In the event of a fire.
They studied it in 2002 and said it was okay.
2002, that's 23 years ago.
Yeah, that's...
You should have seen it in the mid-sixties.
Okay for, it's okay for rural traffic, not for heavy haul trucks up and down, rock trucks. Rock trucks.
You know, when it says it's number one kilometer, you must have your radio on before you even get to the hill.
Yeah, ain't that great?
We tried, when we did the graphite mine, we tried to get that road redone, and they said it was good enough.
All trucks, this is our rule.
That might be different.
Yeah. No, it is bad, yeah.
There was a lot of sinking that happened on that hill that had to get repaired in recent years.
The whole road fell over. They had to put those concrete pylons.
It's not a big engineering job, I would, you know, it's fairly simple.
Well, perfect.
My kids, like, practice, like, right at the bottom of that hill. So regardless of whether it's a formidable problem or not, I would just need to see the mine go forward without that problem at all.
Well, wait till you hear the public meeting for the expansion of the graphite mine.
Ted, I have a question about your samples for readyment. You had sent samples for readyment.
Yeah.
Yeah, so is part of the plan for the income for the mine to be sending loads of cement?
No.
Aggregates?
No, just to supply the sand.
Yes, to answer your question, yes. I think, Ted, you misunderstood the question. You do intend to sell aggregate for the readyment plants?
I.e. for...
Sand and gravel?
No, you know, not so much on the gravel.
Sorry, I think...
Curious.
Yeah.
So cement, readyment.
It's a small portion, when you're up there.
Of the business.
That's why it would be good to actually have a tour. Have a couple representatives we need and have a tour.
I don't need to see the rocks. I want to know what they'll be used for. Where is the money being made here? Where is it going? What is it for?
The money is really in the riprock.
Not in cement?
No.
So you won't sell anything just cement?
Oh, we could, but there's no sand plant around here.
So you might sell something in the cement.
Yeah, but for this type of cement.
So the answer is yes.
Yeah, so small.
But yes.
Okay, so it's not to drainage, it's also for cement use for, yeah. Part of the income of the mine will be made with cement.
I assume so.
Yes.
Right.
Because that's not part of what I'm doing right now. The thing is, what I'm doing is a public comment and then.
And and you just keep focusing on one, one part of what the mine will be used for, and I just want to know the whole picture.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then 80% is drained.
So Ted.
Sorry, I have a few, so feel free to interrupt. But first, I was paying here Atlantic knowledge literally, so just wanted to acknowledge that we're on the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Senai's in Tanaka. But past that, could you just confirm real quick Ricky Pujal of the Pujal Global Group, that's whose homes are area aggregates in Mexico?
Well, it's their family that she.
Right.
Yeah.
Director of Ricky Pujal.
She's the director, yeah.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Um, you mentioned a few times that there's nobody within one kilometer. But if you look at a map, you can see that there's nine to 11 properties within one kilometer. The closest property is about 500 meters away around.
Google Earth.
So I would love for you guys to post information around how you came up with that one kilometers. Where you were showing it, because if you look at the maps, it shows lots in Google Earth. There's quite a bunch of much.
Organic mechanic, which is closest.
But that does incorrect. I actually have a photo here from a website somebody put together. And you you can take a look at it if you like.
There's another one on the back table.
It's like, you know, clear with little houses. It's pretty easy to follow.
Yeah, we live there.
So so that's a good point that you bring it up, because the pit doesn't have to be in the exact spot, because it could be moved.
Yeah.
For the valley.
Like, fall foreway?
The truck just to me.
How that whole area, what's the stop? Who was expecting it pretty down at a later date?
We can, we can, you know, it's all right.
Basically, you can dig that whole area.
No, 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 you you've mentioned a few times that it's not on the Aerie watershed.
Yes.
What about the other three watersheds in the location?
No, there's a tiny creek. It's in a a small watershed.
Yeah.
The creek is dry except for two, two months out of the year.
Sure, but your proposal says that there is no natural water streams going through it?
There is none, yeah.
That also seems correct, so I mean, maybe a field trip during freshets might be might be helpful for that?
Which which we want to do.
Yeah, I mean, you would see that there are waters going through the area. If anyone here has photos of water in the area, that'd be really helpful to submit to Larry or something like that. In your own proposal, you do mention that companies have a difficulty with reforestation. And your proposal has no information on the reclamation plan. It basically says, we'll just leave it and see the trees who grow back.
That's that's the next step, you know, right now, uh, you know, this is what, that, you know, we're just getting your comment.
Perfect, and this is my comment.
And we replied to that comment.
Awesome.
Well, independently, it won't be us, but it'll be a consultant.
Perfect, I I appreciate that comment. Details on chemicals, fuel storage, spill plans and waste disposal would be very important.
No chemicals for.
So so how are you going to bring power to the location? Are you going to take it off of the P2M mine? Or a diesel generator, because that's fuel?
We're we're actually going to fuel up off the property, so when the truck, a truck will come in. Because what happens is that that fuel will disappear overnight, you know, from that. So everything the fuel will.
So you're saying you have no pressure?
There's no crushing and screening.
There's great, so what's going to run the screener?
Well, we'll we'll have a M G set there, but the power, the the fuel will be brought in daily.
The fuel be brought in daily, but you'll have fuel on site.
During the daytime, yeah.
During the daytime. And so that's not no fuel on site. That's just saying no fuel.
Overnight, yeah.
Correct, so again, I'll repeat, chemical, fuel storage, spill plans, waste disposal. And waste disposal, as you would understand, would also include organic matter. We're not just talking like.
Well, that they're part of the burn.
Sympathic puncher or something like that. We're talking like even the soil is.
Well, in mining, you use your organics in the burn, so when you reclaim it, you use it for.
Correct, you would have possibly excess. Um, people that already talked about the dust, but I just wanted to get on the public record that we're most interested in the P2M and the P10 distance, on how far those particulates would travel. There's no detail on the size of the burns or how often you're going to spray water.
Or we we did have on on here.
The size of the burns?
But remember, remember, remember that this is, you're asking technical questions.
I am asking.
Yeah, and so those are questions that.
As Larry pointed out, we don't know if we're going to get more time to consult, so I'm getting as thorough as I can. Um, how are you going to get water to the site?
Water truck.
So you're going to bring water trucks in?
No, we're not going to get water from the site.
Okay, so so fuel truck, water truck, gravel truck, will you be traveling to site daily, your site?
Right.
And leaving daily?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that on top of the rock trucks?
Where's the water come from? Where's the water?
Well, whoever the contractor is, whoever the partner is.
So on top of the 15 trucks?
Well, whoever the contractor is to do it.
So we understand you're going to need two different permits. One permit you're going to need is a notice of work. And your notice of work, you're going to put how many tons you do per year?
Well, a notice of work is not operating, yeah.
Eric, you're going to put how many tons you do per year?
Well, what what happens is.
Clarify, I'm not asking for that. I'm asking, can you clarify how many tons you're going to put in the notice of work?
20,000.
So that means that you cannot go over 20,000, because that's your notice of work.
Exactly.
Right, because some, if you look at other notice of works, what they do is they put a billion tons, so they know that they can just do as much as they want. And however much they bring out is how much they bring out. So I appreciate you clarifying that it's 20,000 tons.
Yeah, and and it's an increment of 10,000, so that your fees, remember, because it's public land, you've got to pay property tax and that.
Correct.
And it's all in 10,000 ton increments.
And then the other permit I believe you need to get is a crown use permit. And a crown use permit does give public consultation where the public.
Exactly, yes.
To add your comments, I know it was mentioned that maybe we won't, but I do not know that that's a place where we will be able to give comments. I don't know how long it's up. I know the forestry people get away with putting it up for 30 days and sneaking things through. But so once that's up, I think we'll have to be on the ball to get those comments in.
We've been told that we had to do that, yeah.
And then the last thing I just wanted to ask about is at the beginning of the presentation, you alluded to your engineering license. But just to be clear, you did lose your engineering license for not protecting public safety, for not establishing and maintaining documented quality management processes, and not working only on projects that you're allowed by the work on. And that's the official document that you've signed, and that's what it stated that you breached, correct?
It had to had to do with the regional district.
Well, that had to do with the E G B C.
Well, uh, no, but the the thing was, uh, well, I don't want to go into both.
We don't need to get into the details, other than the public record, is that you've breached those.
Well, they fined me $21,000 for swearing at them.
Correct, and you signed at the bottom that you worked outside of the practice. You weren't pulling the public safety to account, and that you didn't establish or maintain documented quality process. So I just have to question how we can trust the information that you're presenting here?
No, because I'm working as a project manager and I hire, I hire the.
Certify any of your technical documentation that you're presenting to us in the next presentation.
But I hired the people as a project manager. Under, you know, under the mines, you don't want your P Ns, because what happens is that you are responsible, not the company. So if something happens as as a P N, you're finished.
Yes.
But I, but I have all the, I I have all the permits for the mine.
Perfect, that was the last of my questions, so thank you very much for taking.
Yeah.
I don't know anything about mines. I just see this big L on, but there. Can you just dig around anywhere in that area? You said you could move things, so I'm just trying one day.
Well, no, that's the area of our of our mineral claim. So when we apply for the mining permit, we have to show exactly where we put the mine.
Oh, I see, and that's where you take the 20,000?
Exactly.
Just from that spot.
And we'd have to show that every time, like every couple of years.
Right.
Because your reclamation, you just don't start the reclamation until day one.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, you actually start reclaiming after a year or two.
And so once you're able to get the 20,000 or whatever, and you've gone through all this process, is it really easy to then up it? By applying, like, I don't know the process and.
Yeah, but when you when you up it, you have to make the application.
So we have, we have meetings like this? Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
Because of public land.
Yeah, thanks.
I wanted to bring up the subject of noise again, to add to what Walter has said. My understanding is, having gone through the process with R C K before, that there's a decibel limit. So yes, you have the right to make noise within the hours of operation. However, you don't have the right to make noise above a certain limit. So I wondered, your comment was that that you don't anticipate a noise impact?
Well, no, because of the burns. Yeah, but I gotta say.
Also, just, is there any process in place where you do an actual assessment, some kind of scientific?
You actually have a meter that measures the noise, and then you follow what the, like, regional district will have a number that you can't go over.
And showing that that's.
Yeah.
So if I can answer your question here, one of the comments, not specifically to this operation, but to the other operations of gravel pits that I've been involved in, is one of my recommendations was that there be sound testing done to determine noise level generated by the operation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So and that's the requirement for when you're operating, that the noise testing be done, that you do not exceed the allowable decibel limit.
Of course, of course, so on the budget, you buy, you buy the, that's in that meter. But I gotta say that the numbers the regional district give out are really, really high. Yeah, and far higher than the mining will be. Yeah, because, like I said, I've done 21 projects, and it's always, all over the world, you, they make, you know, they allow a lot of noise. In this case, we won't be hearing anything because of the burns.
I guarantee you, we will hear them.
Valley, are you seeing?
I'll hire the per.
What kind of an engineer are you?
They're about, they're about to hide in the.
Standing ground. So, sorry.
Oh, there, there, yeah.
So we're the organic canyon. We're the closest to the project, which we are very close. Like, we can hear when logging trucks go by.
Yeah, but we're, we're.
When you say that there won't be noise, like, that's ridiculous. Literally, it's ridiculous.
Well, it's quite a.
Well, because they're logging right at your site, where they're logging there, we hear the logging, the machines operating all day long.
Oh, yeah.
I was just wondering, is there anybody who lives across the river from the mine?
Yeah.
Not most of them.
I haven't flown this person to you. I'm 400 meters away.
Because the noise across the river is by far.
Well, we were down there, we were down there a couple of days ago, where it was best.
The forestry company that's baking down the trees has been an absolute nuisance for the whole summer. It's insane. You haven't had a moment of peace outside. You can't tell me that you're going to be quieter.
But we're not crushing. We're just running. We're just running a screening plan.
What about a jackhammer? We have an idea what's involved in the screening plan, because we have one on the highway right now that we can hear two and a half kilometer length.
Really?
And the same valve.
But, uh, but we will be building these burns.
So please show us about the burns. Tell us about the burns. Yeah, that's what I'm going to ask.
Well, the burns are, uh, when you, when you do a mine, an open pit mine, you're not stripping material off. And you don't want, so you build a burn with the organic material. Because of organic material, I should better put sound to bait on it. So so when you reclaim the mine, you bring that material back by carrying that apart. So, uh, and then you follow the rules. But but usually, an open pit mine, you don't hear much. No, some of the bits that people are talking about are very close to the highway.
So if we went to the graphite mine, stood on the road, is that what would be your mine?
Graphite mine shut down.
So I have a question. You just said that you would be using the reclamation materials to build the burns. But earlier you said you wouldn't be doing any reclamation until two years into the project. So when would you be building the burns?
Well, we would have to strip that off before we could start doing mining.
First thing, Eddie?
Yeah.
Ted. I have a question. You're looking for angular rock, right?
Yeah.
That's the best rock for stabilization for flood control, right?
Yeah.
So to get angular rock, I'm pretty familiar with the country. I used to be in charge of road building up there. So you got to drill and blast to get angular rock, correct?
No.
No?
No, that's what, unfortunately, what I said. I have this sample.
But on your first part of your presentation, it said drilling and blasting, and then more drilling and blasting.
No, I said drilling.
Drilling.
Yeah, so you're using jackhammer, right, on an excavator?
Just to, just to find out where you're, to the top pile to find out what the rock.
Okay, are those your samples back there on the table?
Yes.
Why don't you save yourself a lot of heartbreak and just go up to Marioca way far away and put a pit in there?
Yeah.
Leave everybody alone.
Well, that's what I'm trying to explain. Falling that happened.
Yeah.
It it shattered the rock, and then I got a good photograph there.
There's a whole bunch of it in Marioca. 26 homers up Coop Creek, lots of it.
Yeah, but.
Probably more than on the old face.
They still have to use the roads, though.
It's the same rock, I meant, with your sample.
Don't they still have to use the roads, though? So I think that that's, to me, one of the biggest things is not only 10 to 25 truckloads a day, but water every day and fuel in and out, like, that's a lot more. On this little road where people walk.
It's affecting the safety of our communities.
Well, you don't realize, you haven't seen anything yet for that road. Because you've still got the graphite mine, and it's going to be a huge mine.
Well, that's not reassuring, Ted.
That's not really going to be really true.
That really doesn't, that really doesn't help this group.
One, one battle at a time, Ted.
So, yeah, one battle at a time, so, um.
Yeah.
But most of that will be.
She said, thanks for the head sound.
The killer is going to be pickup trucks rather than.
So why add even more?
The water can flow over this road. There's no reason it can't go north. It doesn't have to come through Passmore. And you might find more material on your way going north.
North to Alaska. Go for it.
Alaska with racing Slocum. Standing the Slocum.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, how close to the watersheds are you?
Where are you supposed to?
Right adjacent, right adjacent to the Aerie Creek boundary watershed, and there's a map on the back that I put together that shows where that that watershed is. It's right on the edge.
Right on the edge. Are you going to be mining at that edge?
No, that's where the plant.
The plant? Well, the screening plant.
I wish she'd putting all the dust.
And remember, is that, it's not, it's flexible. We can change design at this point.
So that dome you mentioned where you don't need to blast because all.
So, that dome you mentioned where you don't need to blast because all that rock has already been separated?
Yes.
Right? So, does that mean it's that much easier for anything to permeate through into the different watersheds then?
Yes.
Right, so that-
No, because it-
Why, there's a natural wall that's built?
Uh, uh, that'd be good.
You just explain that nothing can cut through it, and then you-
Glad you asked a question, because regular old trouble may be a surprise. Okay. That's the way it's sitting right now. Like that, okay? It's sitting like that. So, um, you can see the boulders, the riprap, bit of sand. That, that's the way it's sitting. It's not like we're going and stripping it. And, uh, you can see that the bush here, it's all, uh, it hasn't been reclaimed. It's just good, 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 uh, natural. But the- Well, this is what's sitting on the surface.
Yeah, I know, but you're just gonna scavenge the surface?
Seven and a half meters.
How many?
Seven and a half meters.
Seven and a half meters at a time.
But it's only two benches because it's almost flat.
Total of depth that you go, seven and a half meters?
Yeah, yeah.
At a time, exactly, here.
There's two benches, so fifteen meters total.
Fifteen meters down.
And across, in the slot. And then while you're doing it, you're reclaiming right behind you, you see you're going along like that, you're mining and-
What, like a combine?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, yeah.
So, you talk about the screening plant part. What does that look like? Is that a building? So, you have construction trucks coming in with equipment, bringing more stuff in to build the building? Or is the screening plant like a little zip, which I bet it's not?
Well, it's just three, 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 three products. So, the street is there, so there's a screen, and then, uh, they have different sizes of screening, you know, like the, the stuff comes-
You're gonna have to bring all that stuff in and out, and wear and have equipment to-
Yeah, you lowered it, yeah.
But to build the screening plant, that's a set.
Yeah, it's movable.
It has to come in?
Yeah.
It'll come in on flat access, or on a long way. You've seen them on the highways, that screening, they're very, they're, they're very cordial.
Might I suggest that, that you consider another meeting where you can properly disseminate the information that you had prepared today? So that you can have adequate and proper and informed feedback from the community?
What we're waiting for is, all your comments are being recorded.
But we can't, we can't speak to some of the knowledge that you were wanting to translate to us because of your technical difficulties. So, I think that this is an inadequate opportunity-
Well, that's why, that's why we want a field trip.
But that's, we're not all going on a field trip, Ted. So, like, I don't think that, that we're having an adequate opportunity to speak to things because you don't have an adequate opportunity to disseminate the information that for us to be informed on.
But we, we can give you the result ahead, and, yeah.
It's not-
Can I just, I, I'd like to make a comment to that. I'm sorry, um, to interrupt. I, for one, am, am very surprised at the level of this application that has gathered us together today with very, very little information. Very little information, and no, what I consider very little preparation, Ted, and I'm sorry, but I think I'm gonna speak what's on everybody's mind right now, is that we have a lot of concerns. We put together a lot of man-hours to try to figure out those concerns, but we shouldn't be doing that. We, what we should be doing is hearing what you have to say, what your environmental plan is, what your extraction plan looks like, what the road use, where's the road use agreement, how does, how many does it allow, that sort of thing. That's the information that we would expect to see from you at this stage at a consultation stage. And I'm, and I, and I, I don't know, am I, am I the only one thinking that, or?
No.
So, let us talk the way it works. The way it works is that you're, you are coming to us with the questions. We are now going to get the questions and give you the answers.
So, we can't, we can't give the questions if we don't have the information.
So, you're hoping that we're ignorant and we don't have the information?
So, then he doesn't have to do it?
And you don't have to do anything?
We don't have a lot of it because of this.
Well, we don't have a lot because you didn't provide a lot of it.
That's why we need an adequate opportunity to respond to the information that's relevant to your proposal that will affect our community.
The challenge is, we don't have the information that's relevant at this juncture, and I fully agree.
Because we didn't get-
No, Ted, I like, I, I keep going back to this. We don't want to go out to look at the mine site. What we want to know are, what is the information that pertains to number of trucks on the road? How heavy are the trucks? What's your production rate gonna be? How are you mitigating dust? We don't care about what's out there on the ground, and I think most of us have been out there to have a look already. We've been out there because of this is, this is near and dear to our hearts. So, what we want, and I agree fully, is that you should arm yourselves with a little more information, prepare to, to have a, a, a group pepper you with questions, and you, you now have this information that we compiled, but we're not the experts. We spent hours on Google, and that's how we, that's how we came up with these questions. So, is it, that really, is that the, is that the way it works? Is you throw out a, a dart on their board and say, oh, let's get, let's get the, the locals to comment, and if they don't say anything, away we go?
That's the way it works, because when you deal with some kind of-
Okay, well, that's not, that is not a satisfactory answer, Ted. And we will not accept that as a benefit.
Ted, I think that you lied to us twice in this meeting, saying that you consulted with the NADA, saying that you consulted with RDCK and done that adequately. I think you have not. I think you have done none of this adequately, and you have kind of just very unprepared.
But no, but that's not the way it works.
And I think that mistrust has already been broken, and that's unfortunate, because I was hoping to have, like, maybe some back and forth, that you-
You're just following what we were told to do.
Well, yeah, go above and beyond, try harder, because that's, that is the lowest of the standards, I think, that you created here.
No, but we, we have got the input.
But you don't have trust right now. It's, it's pretty low.
Like, what, what is, how big is the operation, knowing that?
No, well, the question is asking-
Hopefully, it's zero, because that's what we're gonna do.
Flip flopping.
Okay, I don't think this is critical anymore.
It's, it's John's face, of course.
But it doesn't matter what there is up there, like, whether or not it's good for riprap or-
Oh, yeah, no, we're not interested in that.
Put it in your questions and tell us how we stop you.
Oh, yourself?
Yes, yes. That's the question I wanna report.
I wanna know, is any studies on the effect of this for animals?
Well, remember, we're not doing that study, that's all part of the environmental- And the contractor will be doing that work. We're just saying-
There's, there has been lots of, lots of analysis done on the local stuff.
So, the key is that whoever you get to do those studies or consultations, that they approach those people for those studies that have already been done, and not a study from, who knows where.
Yeah, that's right. And, uh, we pretty well know who, which consultant to use, like Mass and Maricopa.
So, what consultants are you applying to use? Mass? Mass, N A T T?
M A S S.
N A S S.
Okay.
So, Ted, um-
You're in a mountain road winter range on both sides, hope you know that. And you're in an ugly early winter range, I hope you know that.
Well, Mass and Maricopa, so-
Mass wasn't around in the eighties, nineties. I did the studies. The goats are confirmed, they live there.
Yep.
I don't know who Mass is.
Well, one of the owners lives in the valley, so.
Wow, that's weird. We have eight elk in our yard.
A lot of new people came to this valley, and doesn't mean they know what they're talking about.
You say that you're starting, supposed to start in April twenty twenty-six, yet you don't have the rights?
Well, this, it's not gonna happen, because there's nothing happening out there. The strike, the consultants, it's nothing.
That date was posted before the strike, so that has no impact on whether you'd have been ready or not?
Well, that, that, that doesn't mean it's ready. You've gotta use a target to do the analysis. You know, when, um, when you've got a company, they'll, they'll say, oh, it would be good to start around that time to see what you could do about it.
No, it's just a realistic date would have been later on. I guess if you start the studies next year, that'll take six months to a year, so how do we start next year? I mean, it would-
Well, that's all part-
You decided to post the website.
That's, that's all part of what we have to do now, is that we have this meeting, your concerns, that date has to be reexamined. You know, or else we just keep writing and writing and changing reports or reports. But the comments given at this meeting gives us a direction to come up for the next meeting.
When?
The meeting is like finished, and, uh-
What is the next step?
Next step, get the strike over with.
No, like, I don't know.
No, no, what's the next step for you in this process?
Well, putting all your comments together into, into a report.
Right.
And that, that would be the report that goes for approval for the permit.
And who does the report go to?
Uh, it will go, uh, to, to Minister of Energy and Mines.
So, you're gonna submit the report for approval before we get a chance to comment on it?
No, no, because it, you'll have a chance because it's public land. Well, almost all mining companies in Canada own the land. In this case, it's public land.
Do we in this room have the power to shut this down slot before it starts the meeting?
Questions, um, you, you said tonight was for input, for you to get our input?
Yeah, that would be the basic problem.
And to present it to somebody. Um, I have been part of many public meetings where people were really against something, but then when it gets written up by somebody, it doesn't sound like the meeting, so I'm, I, I'm not trying to accuse or, or project anything here, but I do hope that you're getting the sense from us that there are many valid questions, and that we hope that we will not be skipped over or dismissed in many ways.
Well, again, we have to answer all your, all of your concerns. But we, if we didn't have a meeting, we wouldn't know what your concerns would be.
So, somebody's taking notes and?
Yes.
I have two questions, Ted. I think people are trying to understand what the process is and where they, where and when they can influence that, and I'd like to know that before all the work, all the assessments are done, because we don't understand the process. And second of all, can we see the list of questions? Because the, the concern is, the interpretation of our questions may not be accurate, so can we see that before you get working on it?
Well, well, we can give you the act, the parts of, you know, what they give us.
No, I'm talking about the things that we spoke to you about today. Can we see the list?
Oh, you're gonna see it. Um, what, what you do is, when I, when we put all this together, then we have to give us to the minimum of two libraries, so the range with Spokane Library and Nelson Library. So, the document, the next stage document will be in those libraries.
But that's once you've finished doing all the work. We just wanna know that the question-
No, no, that's the next stage.
Oh, I see, the questions are-
Yeah, yeah, and then, then you, as an individual, can go in and you just sign up to take it out. And then, uh, you read it.
I gotta go to slow and read the book to know if the questions were adequately translated.
No, but you're gonna find out, it might be six volumes, because you'll have all the consultant reports.
No, no, you're not understanding, Ted. I'm asking, can we see our list of questions before you do all the reports?
Well, this is where-
I'm sure.
I thought you guys were recording stuff. I'm really confused.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna put something together.
It's all recorded. We, we record on behalf of the community, um, and I think they're audio recording on behalf of the proponents. And we have a written submission with our questions, plus the commentary from the group. There should be no misrepresentation of those questions. Like, we-
But can we see the list?
After the fact, after they compile it? I guess that's what Ted's referring to in the idea.
I was gonna say, we could, as onerous as it might be, we would get to relive this meeting again and go through and bring down every question that's been raised.
I can add that could be published, but-
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Your application, like, what the meeting is about, everything on there before you submit the permit? For the permit application?
Oh, you will. You, you'll actually have everything, and it'll be in a library.
Before you-
But that's where you, you said that was with the consultant's report, so that's not-
It'll be this report, it's all, all, all the important documents will come inside. When, if ever, in, in Alfred, we wanna see it, where the tech is from coal mines, it's almost a room of stuff. So, when the people have a question, they can go in and get it, and then they have a second public meeting. I've attended a number of tech meetings, it's just like this, you know? But you've got, and then it's the stuff you disagree in the write-off, then you, then you put it in writing that you disagreed.
And I think, again, the question has been, you're going to have a list of questions and concerns and points that were made at this meeting, correct?
Yes.
The question is, are we able to see that to make sure that my question or someone else's question is on that list?
You know, because it's a public document.
Before it's submitted, before it's submitted, before you go to the consultants.
Yeah, because, uh, if it was a private company that owned the land, that is a whole different process. You are the owner, so I have, if you, if you're the owner, that's what you want.
So, you're saying that you're gonna give, send that out to us? So, for instance, that small, I had a group that met last night?
Well, we got all your name and, you know, send that to you.
And that will be forwarded to us?
Yes, that's why we got all that.
We put together that list too, we can forward that to you. You can even look at both and see if you cover them all before you send that to us.
Perfect.
So, double verification.
And the other piece of that question that I read, I don't understand the whole process, so can we understand the process before it's done?
Yes.
That's the piece, and where, where we get to enter it.
Yes, yeah, that's right. It's pretty easy, it's quite a, it's simple.
It's not easy.
Yeah.
It is not easy. We, we spend hours trying to understand it, Ted, and it is not easy. Even, even to address Walter's question about where we are in the process, that's not an easy answered question. You, like, I look at it and think B seven, but then, then there, like, there's other aspects of that that I'm sure you haven't done yet. It's not an easy answer.
Well, actually, we, we talked to the manager of, of Front Calder, and he said, you gotta have this meeting. That's basically it. He didn't say the detail, and then when, when we went to the office-
So, even he doesn't understand his own process?
It don't give you the details, which you have to get on the-
Either that, or he's just acting stupid. Is he really stupid, or is he acting stupid? That's what I wanna know.
It's gonna be a boom for our rivers and riprap all down the valley and all over the place. We can't afford that as property owners. I live at the top of the passmore slide. My neighbors at Carlson asked RDCK to come and mitigate the erosion of the bottom of their bank, and RDCK said, no way. Way too much money will never do it.
Well, right now, that's a-
So, you saying that RDCK is gonna do all this work for us is not true.
No.
No, no, uh, it's, the provincial government-
This rock to put it down along our riverside.
But it's not RDCK, it's provincial government.
Contra, provincial government?
Well, right now, they're giving grants for that. It's gonna be going off to the lower mainland, but they're giving grants.
And I must say, the road-
We have to understand the process from the ground to the truck going down the road, so we know what we have to worry about. And there's a lot of explanation or understanding for the people in this room that don't have it done, just haven't worked around this kind of stuff. They don't have a clue what we're dealing with and what it's gonna be. And that should have been presented into this meeting tonight.
Well, if your comment is what we want.
Yeah, but you should have had a chart. We talked about B seven, you know, and I don't know what that means. There should have been a chart going through A, A one to whatever, and then B one to whatever, and whatever, and you could be able to show us, this is where we're at. Whatever that chart looks like. What does it mean? Where does B seven come from? I mean, you can go on the RDCK website and look at other gravel applications.
But this is not gravel, it's aggregate, it's not gravel.
Like, they're eighty acres long, they're a hundred acres long, but a lot of the questions are asking.
Yeah, but they're, they're in a different state. They're in a different state to their landowner.
And he is not prepared for the process.
As to the date, have you had a machine up there, or is?
And expects it to just happen.
Legally, they're not-
Legally, they're not allowed to do anything with.
Well, what's happened, it, yeah, it's just that the, it's all exposed by the, the, uh, by air force.
Right. It's all exposed by air force, like it's still bush.
The road's gonna break down.
Well, what was the fifteen meters deep that you're gonna go?
That's what the drilling is all about.
But you haven't done it yet.
Well, we can't get a permit.
So you haven't done it yet?
No. No, but you can, because the road goes through there, you can just look at.
My house shakes when trucks go by, I don't feel safe, I live at the top of the slide, I don't feel safe. I don't feel safe having more trucks riding by, and I don't feel safe on the road coming down, the only reason it's safe is because there's not very much traffic and you hardly meet anybody on the road, but if you try to go up that road with fresh snow, you don't want to slow down.
No.
You gotta keep going, and the person at the top has to.
Oh, that hill, yeah.
Yeah, it's not safe, it's not safe for more traffic, it's only working because there isn't a lot of traffic, otherwise there'd be accidents. And there's buses that go up, there's school buses, right there.
That won't be mentioned.
Please.
Yeah, because, uh, you could, with that application, you can say, we don't do something about that, then there'll be note about it going on. And there's a lot that could happen out there.
Yeah, I think we should check out our bench, make sure we're stable.
Actually, I think your construction incident here, that's an easy job, it's like a road. It's not expensive, it's pretty easy.
Which road?
The bench, above the Pasmore Slide, where the crossing sees a house that is falling.
Yeah, she's right there.
And then pieces of septic and house, leftover pieces in our river now.
I don't think that the road is necessarily the, the issue, it's the development that's putting pressure on the road. Right now, the road's doing fine, the road did fine before they paved it, you know, like, if under certain pressure, it's okay. But all of a sudden, we got cat ops, we've got, uh, you know, tons of recreational pressure up there, all of course, the logging industry, the forest industry, and now we're talking about more impact and, and pressure on that whole area. From, right from your site all the way to your destination, it doesn't stop at the Pasmore Bridge, your impact is across wherever you're going, you won't even tell us where you're going.
In Vegas, I stayed up there for a day, encountered what went by in the truck.
Yeah, well, we all live there, you don't tell me about your day, don't tell me about your day, we all live there.
Ninety percent of the trucks that went by our.
That's over and above all the heavy traffic, you're missing the point entirely.
I just wanted to say that.
It's impact, there are increasing impact on and pressure on the watershed, the road, the environment, animals, the population, everything.
That's why we get consultants.
And another thing, actually, there's been flood mitigation in this valley for years, and you've been part of it too, without this riprap mine. There is riprap around that we can get to mitigate the flooding on the Little Spokane and the Spokane. If you're talking about taking riprap to do the Columbia, and on the other side of the line in the Columbia, who knows what you're talking about?
Vancouver.
Because you actually won't tell us what you're talking about.
Lower mainland, that's what he's talking about, it's not coming here.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Well, if you want to see how.
They, they're developing properties down there, and that's where it's going.
I, I, I know how it's done, Ted, and it was done before this mine. Right? They didn't even point road.
That's the material that we're after to do the jobs like that.
Okay, so where did you get that material? Where did, where did that material come from?
I can't remember.
Where did that material come from?
Did it give it to me?
I don't know where that material came from.
Whoa, well, go find it and get some more of that.
Well, it probably came, uh.
Just go get your rocks.
So there's already a mine somewhere mining riprap. There's definitely a supplier for riprap, unfortunately Brian left, and other people can answer this question. It's not for local benefit, is all my point.
Right.
Right there, yeah.
Exactly that.
The mining right there was, they're drilling and blasting it, and it was houses all around there. Uh, drilling and blasting it because there's such a high demand for it, and there's the trucks every ten minutes leaving that place.
Isn't that terrible?
No.
Well, it goes by my head.
Do you love it?
No, I get, get used to the noise.
Well.
You choose not to, you choose not to get used to that noise.
You need to wrap her up.
Yeah, yeah, we're out of here.
Well, this is the time to plan to wrap her up.